Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for May 11th, 2015. I'd like to start by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to invite Abby Corelles up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
So I just want to say a word about Abby. Abby is our student poet laureate, also an exceptional three-sport athlete in soccer, basketball, and lacrosse. So, and I put her on the spot about two minutes ago and asked her to come up here, and in true champion fashion, she did it. So, thank you.
Yay!
Okay. First on the agenda, or actually, second on the agenda, is approval of the minutes from April 27th, 2015, open sessions. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Watson, a second from Ms. Dilly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, moving to communications and announcements, we have another new staff member for the town to introduce. We'll ask Eric Cifory to come up and introduce our new town planner, very excited.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, President of the Board, very happy to introduce to you our new town planner, Christine Cheatham. Christine comes to us from Danvers. She's been a member of the planning board in Danvers for the past 13 years, brings a vast experience in local government, she's in planning. She's worked for, she was town planner in Hamilton, she worked for New Hampshire's Office of State Planning, as well as she worked in Portland, and most recently, in Gloucester.
And...
Welcome to North Andover.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to work here in your community. Today was day one, so I'm listening and learning and reading a lot. So, I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and it's been a great experience so far.
Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out to any one of us for anything, I guess, or anybody.
Great, thank you very much.
Not Don, though.
Anybody but Don.
Go plan your way to the donut.
Okay. Next on the agenda is an update from Karen Klein, our North Andover poet laureate.
Oh, thank you very much. Well, you've met our poet laureate, our new junior poet laureate. That's a program that started last year in the high school. And for the first year, we had two. We had a junior poet laureate who was Virginia Lazon, and then, an assistant poet laureate, Ben Lawton. Now, I really believe that this is an important position, and I would really like as many people in town who would like to, to support it, in any way they can. Because we have been going to, on the 6th of March, the current poet laureate and junior poet laureate helped us, Mary Gregoire and I, helped us to have a poetry program for 400 children in the sergeant's school. And we're going to be planning to do each one of the other schools before the school year is over. We do one school a day. And that is exactly what we need to have, so that the younger children will see the poet laureates, who are a little bit older than they are, and they listen to them much more than they will us. I think one of our selectmen might have a story about that, as far as the library program. When we went to, yep, yep, but Stevens Memorial Library, we had 130 to 40 people, I guess, on the 26th of April for National Poetry Month, and Sophia was there. If you tell how she kept her interest up until she...
(inaudible) anymore.
The adult, the adult, right, the adult was reading, and...
That's true, so the adult was reading, and she had no interest, that's true, in the adult.
No, we had like five children beforehand.
And it wasn't until the kids were reading that she actually paid attention, probably for six or seven students, and then...
Yeah, okay.
I count that as a win, when you have a three-year-old, and...
Of course, with all those people in that room, and she liked watching other children, who were older.
Yeah, that's true.
So, it works. And if I could have Mary Gregoire come up, I would like her to explain, real quick, what her work is, and why she thought that this was an important thing to do before she left the high school.
Absolutely.
This lady, we have to tell, please tell everyone what your, what your situation is, what your, what your position is, and...
presently, I'm the Humanities Coordinator, Curriculum Coordinator for the District. I have taught at North Andover High School for 37 years, and I was Department Chair for four years, so that's where I am at this point. This year, we had a piece poetry contest from, with all the schools, we had 168 submissions, and 36 children came to the library on the 26th to read their poems. We also had the 50th Annual Poetry Jam at the high school on April 17th, so we had poets come in, but Ginny and Ben Langton, who orchestrated all the music, wrote the music, played behind the scenes, and had, we had students from out, throughout the high school, read their poetry as well. So, it's been a great, it's been fun, it's been wonderful, it's been creative, and it's, it's getting the town towards kind of a cohesive effort to talk about peace, to talk about creativity, and to talk about poetry. So, I've been really pleased with everything that the children have done throughout this year. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
And now, could we have our junior poet laureate, please? Oh, this lady's very successful in many different ways, not just poetry. But I would like to read her award for everyone. This is to certify that Abigail Corelles has won the distinction of being the Junior Poet Laureate for the 2015-2016 school year. In this role, she is to represent the town of North Andover, and will perform all of the duties and responsibilities of that, of this office, signed by myself and Mrs. Gregoire. Congratulations!
Thank you.
And now, she will give you one quick sample.
I just have a quick poem I wrote during the month of March, and it's called "March Madness." "March Madness" about, is about to begin, fill out the brackets, see who will win. Will it be Kentucky, Duke, or Notre Dame? Once in the tournament, it's anyone's game. The Sweet 16 is where you'll want to be, to see your team play and win with glee. Next is the Final Eight, most teams usually play great. The Final Four is the beginning of the end, the national championship is right around the bend. The last two teams battle it out, win or lose, you'll scream and shout." Thank you.
Well, that's great, and it's great to see young people being involved, too, and inspiring younger people to, to be involved in poetry and reading, so thank you very much for all you do there, and, and for all your exploits on the, on the competitive fields, too, which are amazing. I don't know if anybody saw, there was a nice article about Abby in the paper last week, I think it was, or, very, very impressive, thank you. Okay, next, my turn to go back. Next on the agenda, the Earth Day Cleanup Acknowledgement.
Mr. Chairman, Bruce Tobito had forwarded to the board a letter acknowledging or recognizing as many of the people as he could recall for the Earth Day Cleanup that took place this past weekend. It was a very successful event. He apologizes in advance for anybody he may have left off. I think, again, it's a pretty extensive list that the chairman may want to identify, if he feels like mentioning by name, but certainly, there'll be some folks who, who may have been omitted.
So, yeah, just by way of recognition, Scott Emerson from Willabrayda, who is just an amazing contributor to this community, and, and seems to have his name step up everywhere and anywhere you'd ever want to be. Willabrayda is a great community partner, and Scott's been an amazing advocate for the town. The Sustainability Committee, in particular, Bob Gaffrey and Mike Carney, for doing the late cleanup, which I know I've done this one year, and this is a tough one to do. Peter Boynton, Julia Gigolo, Giglo, sorry, Steve Foster, Brian Fay. And then, just around town, we had Cub Scout Pack 89 was cleaning up Stevens Pond, a group from the United Methodist Church was on Peter Street. There were neighborhood groups that included the Dalys from Bradford Street, Melinda from Hillside Road Meadowview area, Meadowwood area, Meadowwood Road, I'm sorry, Appling Playground Neighbors, Grogy Fields Neighbors, Reynolds Playground Neighbors, and neighbors along Dale, Meadow Lane, Wood Lane, and Waverly Road. And the High School Environmental Club cleaned up around the school for Earth Day before school vacation. Finally, another Cubs Go Pack cleaned up Becky's Pond on Thursday prior to Earth Day. So, just an amazing effort by so many great groups from town, and neighbors, and, and businesses that all kicked in, so thanks, everyone to, who stepped up to do that. I know it's a lot of work, and it's, I can be thankless at times, so, thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to have an update. What's that?
Paper comes in handy.
I know, it just hits me once in a while, it doesn't update in time. Next, we're going to have an update from the West Mill.
This is exciting.
David, are you going to give the update?
Very exciting. For having us tonight, we had realized, you know, we bought the West Mill a year ago February, so we've been there over a year now, working on a number of fronts, and, you know, realized we hadn't been to see you guys since we did that, and we know things are starting to come around where, with the Warren article in the zoning, and work going on in the buildings, wanted to make sure you guys were all apprised of sort of what the vision was for the site, where we stand, what we hope to be doing over the next 12 months, what we've done over the last 12 months. And I think Mr. Murray's going to bring up a presentation to help guide us.
Well, I'm David Steinberg from RCG LLC. I'm a principal of the company in charge of our projects here in North Andover. I'm here with Seth Zarin from my office, he's the Development Manager. If we go to the next slide, I wanted to start with the overall vision for the site, which I think is pretty much the same thing as East Mill, and really expanding that and trying to bring more of that mixed-use center feel, and make connections into downtown North Andover, so that it feels like one town center. There are certain principles we've operated on here to be successful. One of those things is having a flexible, market-driven program and plan. We like to be able to break up spaces for whatever kind of users we can find, we like to make spaces available that aren't easily found in other parts of North Andover, and essentially, just put more bodies in the building. When we bought it last February, as, as you all know, Schneider was moving out at that time, Converse just moved out of their portion of the building in April, so we were essentially inheriting 680,000 square feet of empty buildings. And we just wanted to make sure we were getting people back, help support the local businesses, make sure we continue to have activity on-site, both through the creation of smaller spaces that could accommodate, you know, a person at a time, looking for an office space to get out of their, their house, their small office. To, I guess the largest lease we've signed so far in that building is about 5,000 square feet, and we have a few in that range. We had made some attempts, as Converse was still occupying the building, to get another large corporate user, but that market has just proven to be so competitive, and not that many users in the market, that we're working now on a vision for the former Converse space, and how to break that up for new users. The uses are similar to what we did at East Mill, office, retail, restaurant. We've started work on the residential portion, that is going along Water Street now, and we'll delve in a little bit to how we're working through the buildings. And really targeting that demographic of, of young professionals, empty nesters, people looking for really nice newly constructed loft-style apartments in historic buildings. We have great brick-and-beam space, with light and high ceilings and things that are actually hard to find in communities like North Andover, more, more commonly found in, in more urban environments like Lawrence and Lowell, and downtown Boston. And then, the uses obviously affect all our neighbors, and contribute back and forth with the businesses here, in the more immediate downtown, and our hopes are, over the next couple of years, to continue to bring in businesses that can, you know, are an asset to the community, and to work with neighbors to make sure our development program pleases everybody. So, a quick update, what we're calling Phase 1 here is really what we spent all our time doing since we bought it, which is getting sort of control of the building, and trying to move new people in. We built the, the new parking spaces around the entry loop there, we're able to sign leases with about 15 different tenants already, mostly small tenants, a little under 30,000 square feet to date, but we're essentially signing leases on a daily basis for those smaller tenants. You can see some of those names that are open, and already showing a lot of business, a seller on maternal health and wellness, where they do a lot of, you know, mommy classes, and sell products for new mothers. The Maker Mill, which is a lot of educational programs for school-aged children. Taste Buds Kitchen, which is just opening now, which does cooking classes. And then, a variety of small offices, tech startups, law offices, other health and wellness, we have an acupuncturist in the building, and, and other therapists. And we've done some work already along High Street to build new entry plazas into the building, try to activate each of the entrances, and make it feel more activated along High Street, as you can bounce back and forth and see entries on both sides, and see businesses there. And in that first year, we did obtain a special permit, both to build 42 loft-style apartments, 17 of which are currently under construction, and we're working on the design for the next phase, that will all be in the building along Water Street. And are planned to take down the manufacturing building in the center of the site, that will then be replaced with parking and landscaping, and, and better access and open air. So, at the moment, as we have entered Phase 2 here, we're working on the first 17 apartments. We're hoping those will be delivered late fall, probably at this point, depending on how things go from now on. We do plan to demolish that manufacturing building this summer. We're still working through some of the technical details of working over the culvert that's carrying the Kachikow Brook, and dealing with some of the other parameters of the existing building, which is, ended up being a little more complex than we realized at first. So, we're working on the design details of that, and that will allow us to build about over 100 new parking spaces right down the center of the site, and allow views to the pond, and allow us to do more, more landscaped areas, and, and a better pedestrian environment. The other buildings, we've been working piece by piece on restoring the buildings. We've introduced some of these smaller tenants, we hope to introduce a lot more, including restaurants and retail uses in the buildings. We've also been working on an application for historic tax credits to do a more comprehensive renovation of the buildings and all their infrastructure, replace windows, and do a number of renovations that will really help the leasing on the site, and really beautify the area. There's some other things that we detail on the next slides, about street improvements, infrastructure I talked about. The next year, beyond that, I think we'll be able to get to more of the Converse space, and larger parts of the building, and, and the development for the master plan we can see on the following pages here. This is a zoom-in on essentially the historic buildings of the West Mill. You can see along Water Street there, we're identifying the West Mill lofts, that's where the apartments are going. The rest of those buildings are essentially mixed-use commercial, retail, office, other commercial-type uses. The center lot, right down the middle there, that's the design that we've been working off of, although there'll be significant changes there once we make our revisions. And you can see the Converse building is where it says "Large Office and Office Flex," they have the five-story building and the two-story building. Behind that is part of the old manufacturing building, that we're still making a determination on whether we're going to keep it, whether we're going to build a new building, whether we're going to have more parking and open space there, closer to the buildings. And all that work is work.
Just for those folks on the left, there's Water Street.
Yep.
High Street.
At the bottom of the...
Current, original entrance into the space, and you've talked about the 25 parking spaces, and then, it's that connector building between Davidson, Ferber, and Converse that's being removed for surface parking.
And we should also be noted that that's not a historical part of this building. That building was built in like the 90s, right?
Yeah, in the early 90s, that building went up. So, it'll really expose the buildings that were built in the 19th century, and some of them mid-20th century, and parts of the Converse building. And you can also see that, when we've opened up that building, it actually gives us access around the buildings, so to give public access to the pond there, and you'll be able to circulate from Water Street down into the campus, without having to walk all the way down to the corner of High Street, and come back and, and circle into the center of the lot. So, we think there'll be a lot of benefits there, and we'll be doing work, you know, in and near the bank of, of the pond there, that will help, you know, create a more natural environment back there, and people can enjoy going up along the pond. Having a bigger sort of view of the neighborhood, because we control East Mill and West Mill, we've been trying to think of those more comprehensively now, what we're showing on East Mill, on the east side of High Street, is actually just what was permitted through the Plan Development District back in 2007, and the plan we've been working through for the last eight years, although we never added any of the housing that was permitted that time, up against the pond in one area, and up against the parking lot in another area. With West Mill, you know, the entire campus that we're managing now, and it's two different owners at this point, because we, we had to raise a different investor group to buy the West Mill at the time, is about 40 acres altogether, and really, a significant swath of the, of the area there. Now, you can sort of see the downtown bleeding down into our site, and as we develop our site, we're hoping that it really feels like all one large, active downtown. The West Mill buildings themselves, we showed, we showed you a blow-up of that, and what we'll be doing with the manufacturing building, and the historic buildings there. Obviously, we have fields of parking, in addition to a ball field and, and lawns that are out in the land. We're hoping that becomes part of future mixed uses, as part of the campus there as well, and that...
So, David, how much housing are you thinking around? I'm seeing three different areas there, where you say "future housing," and, and does that also entail removing that current parking structure, and is that part of the master plan?
Well, when we, when we first did the permitting at East Mill, there were 137 units of new housing that were permitted at that time, to go on the lawn by the pond, and at the parking garage. The intention at that point was to tear down at least part of the parking garage and put housing there. We're still considering how to use that, because we think if we can get an agreement worked out between the West Mill and East Mill owners to work together, we might balance out where we put housing across the site, and where we want to keep our parking. And that parking structure is pretty efficient as it is, and buried into the hill, but at this point, I think what we're envisioning for West Mill is, we're not, we're trying not to limit ourselves to housing there, because there's been a few other things that have been brought up to us, other partners looking to develop. As some people know, we were talking to hotel groups, we've talked to senior living groups, we've considered residential there. So, we want something that works with our campus, and there's a bunch of different ways to design it with higher density and lower density. We've been working with the planning board on what their vision is for these sites as part of the downtown, and, as you know, there's the Warren article next week to clarify that, piece of the zoning, and, you know, I think once we have that, and we further develop our master plan, we'll be coming back to people, and, and hopefully, in the near future, with a real plan to spur more development there.
Thank you.
If you can go to the next slide, and some of the things that have already started to come before you, is, since we've started to work on Water Street and the apartments there, we've started to think a little bit more about how that works, and we have those long buildings along Water Street now, that have blanked-out windows and no real connections in and out of the street. For historic reasons, we can't really pop out onto this street, the building's not level with the street there. But our intention now is to add all operable windows there, that will be clear glass, you can see in and out of the building. There'll be a variety of uses there, between residential and commercial, and there'll be a new entrance built out to Water Street from the west end of the buildings, where we can make the grade. But it also has begged the question of what to do about the parking and circulation, as the town's considering already the realignment of the street, and how to work within those constraints for the new lighting, the new design of the parking, and our parking lot, which is across Water Street, you can sort of see it in our circle there, on the corner of Church Street, where we have 35 parking spaces and two different curb cuts. And we've been working with Public Works on some options to redesign the circulation in and out of that lot, improve the pedestrian safety, the visibility, maybe do some planting along the street there, it's a pretty barren part of Water Street there, I would like to spruce things up a little bit. So, we'll be coming back to you guys. You can see right now, there's like a temporary construction entrance in, I think there was some discussion here about the dumpster, potentially put a dumpster on Water Street, although we found an internal location for that. So, we'll try to, to put together a real nice design in conjunction with the town's work, to make especially that, those two blocks of Water Street a little more attractive for everybody. And then, if you look at the, the yellow highlighted areas, those are things that have already been addressed as part of the town's program, and we're excited to see these things happen. I think there's going to be some discussion of a stop sign already tonight, that will predate the realignment, but we get lots of comments from people all the time about how dangerous that intersection is, the people in our building, in our buildings now. And obviously, we did a lot of work at the time, we did East Mill to get parking along High Street, we felt like that's done a lot of traffic calming, there's a couple of good crosswalks now. In the future, as we think about the uses, at West Mill, we may think about different ways to cut across the street, and even safer, you know, and people are always cutting across it random spots anyway. So, rationalizing that, and then, potentially addressing the intersection with Prescott Street, where it can be confusing, especially for newcomers to the area, about, you know, which side of the road are you go around, the sightlines aren't great. And I think, as we start to do work on the parking lots, which you can see on our side of, of the Prescott Street intersection there, might give us an opportunity to do some nicer things around that intersection, and rationalize it there as well. And I think that's the, the brief summary of what we're working on. We have to answer any questions?
Before the questions, so we're coming back with a recommendation of the board for a three-prong stop sign at the intersection of Elm and Water. I don't know if we actually put it on this agenda, but that's, the recommendation is not for four, a four-way stop, but a three-way stop. Coming up the incline presents some difficulties as that queues back, as everybody should know, or certainly the board does know, we've invested, or have set aside a couple million dollars to make infrastructure improvements, subsurface infrastructure on the currently direct-buried wires that feed the period lighting, well, I don't know what period it is, but some period of lighting, and we're going to...
1980s.
1980s, it was a good period. And we're updating that infrastructure that's been funded by Town Meeting, and we'll be replacing the wiring that's currently there with, with properly installed wiring, and then, obviously, installing period lighting in that area as well. And there's a signage program that will add signage at that Prescott Island, as well as signage in, in two other areas, marking the entrance into the Mill Village.
I should say, we're very excited to get the new lighting, we've talked to our tenants about it, I think it'll really spruce up the area around us, we're very appreciative.
It's been a long time coming.
Is the third stop sign coming up? The third stop sign comes up after I come to the board and recommend, this is the third stop sign. That's for safety reasons, right? It's both traffic flow and safety reasons, yes. So, everything in that area should be, be taken into consideration for safety? You mean the truck that's parked to make deliveries? Don, it may be a good time to bring up that truck. Yeah, maybe. As you go down, you have a bump out. You have trucks making deliveries that are parked there every single day. So, before I approve a stop sign for the top half, you have to finish, take care of the middle of the street, too, because those, those trucks are very dangerous. When they park there, it's half and two cars to get by.
Yeah.
So, he's talking about a front Jamie.
Yeah, no, I have to say, I mean, I've seen that condition many times, too, obviously. They're not supposed to do that, and, and, you know, when you introduce things like restaurants and retail, it's kind of like a free-for-all. And, you know, I think it's, it's a hazard of having entrances in and out of the people, in and out of the buildings, if people double park, trucks will double park. We'll certainly talk to the, you know, Jamie's in particular, I think people have brought up as, as the main offender there. You know, I personally find that it's, I like it that the traffic slows, you have to stop and look before you go around the truck, and it keeps people from flying down the street, because we still, we had a car crash into our building just last year, you know, coming a little too fast through that intersection, when, when there are obstructions in the road, you know, I understand it's an inconvenience, and hopefully, it's not too big an inconvenience, and that's not legal parking, but it certainly are...
Creative ways for traffic calming that probably don't involve a truck, and...
Yeah, yeah. We're not planting them there on purpose, and hopefully, it's not too big an inconvenience, but we'll certainly circulate the information again about proper places to load and unload.
So, on the, what you call on the Prescott intersection, that's, there's actually a memorial stone on that, right, for one of the Indian children? So, that obviously will be respected, right? Or there's two, there's two on that now? So, that obviously will be dealt with and respected.
I don't think a final decision's been made about how that intersection, it's just a function of ultimately where you lay the buildings down, and then, as a result of that, where you think the traffic patterns would go. Right now, though, that you're not quite sure, there's a few intersections like this in our town, but you're not quite sure as you approach, if you're stopping, if you're yielding, and so we... yielding. And so we need to make more clear of the traffic.
Because when you're coming down Prescott, there's a stop sign right there.
Right.
But you never know if that person's going to come this way or around, and so you never know where to, you don't know how to go. Yeah, because it's, looks like a rotary, but it doesn't function like a rotary. The stop sign at Water Street taking the left onto High, that's the biggest concern. And I don't know what an additional stop sign coming down Elm is going to do because it's your, when you're coming to Water, you're inching out, inching out, inching out, inching out till you can finally see if anybody's coming up High. That's where the problem is.
Well, I think it's twofold. One is when you, we weren't quite prepared for this, but certainly we'll stop down this road. Just like we wouldn't recommend a stop sign coming up the hill because you're coming up the hill, the natural tendency for folks as they approach this intersection is that you're going to accelerate coming down the hill into a business corridor. Stopping them means that they have to begin again. And if we don't stop them, what we're finding is acceleration as we get past the buildings down, further down into High Street because the road goes like this. So if we're not stopping them, what we're really...
Oh, I'm all about the stop. I'm just, how are we going to fix the inching, inching, inching out on Water Street out into the middle of the intersection before you can see if anybody's coming?
In the long-term alignment of the roadway.
Right here. So if you're coming down this way, you have to inch, inch out before you can actually see.
The roads are running.
You can't see.
And people don't know what to do.
Right, they don't know.
Some people are zipping and some people are slowing and some people are stopping, and that's where it gets messy.
Yeah, so any improvements?
People live there.
People live there? Okay.
It's newcomers everywhere.
That's newcomers?
Okay, one minute is fine. Let me just see if there's any other comments from the board first, and then we'll recognize the audience. Let me just see if there's any other comments from the board first, and then we'll recognize.
Just that it's super exciting. It's good stuff.
No, it is. It's great. And when do you think the first set of tenants would be moving in on Water?
Well, they're hoping the apartments are done late fall, early winter, so sort of toward the end of this year.
Okay.
Depends on having a smooth path from here on out. Working these buildings is very tricky, so I try not to commit myself to a date until we, you know, make sure we can do it right.
And where will parking be for those new tenants? Is that going to be in the new plaza area?
So, yeah, well, when we build a new parking lot down the center, we're going to try to leverage that for all parts of uses on the campus. But the Church Street lot is a good candidate to be linked to those apartments. I'm not sure Church Street will have enough parking in it to accommodate all those apartments. So we'll be balancing it out around the site.
Chairman's comments. How many surface parking spots are you looking to create from the removal of the building? And two, it's assumed that those residential units will not be the entire stretch of Water Street. Is that fair? They'll start above mid-building and work toward?
That's correct. So the historic entrance to what's called Building Seven with the Davidson-Ferber arch over it, we're going about halfway back in the building, keeping that all commercial on all three floors. And then starting only on the upper two floors there to the end of the building, and the end of the building is a four-story building, so three of those stories will be residences. So it'll be the part of the Water Street buildings that are oriented up toward Main Street.
Now, this client, Fort Laredo, you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to comment about the stop sign at Water Street having another one because I've seen elementary school students alone trying to cross those streets with little backpacks on, so I, maybe they're going to say mikes. I'm not sure, but it's really not safe.
So you're in favor of a stop sign there as a safety measure?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Over sides.
Okay, thank you.
Over the side stop signs?
Over the side stop signs, yes.
They're half dead.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Cifori?
First of all, I just want to say it's been, working real closely with Dave and his team's been great. And a good example of that is today we've kind of reached, I hope, some final touches on some agreement where we are looking to add a stop for the commuter bus to Boston for pickup, the second pickup point. What we're finding is that may help certainly with people living closer to downtown. It doesn't make sense for them to go out to Osgood Landing, it's going north, go south. So I think if you look, what I'll call the Converse parking lot, in the lower-left corner, is that about right? Well, that's along that strip of grass there?
Yeah, we see, exactly, we see the strip of grass to the left of the screen there. We've essentially allocated some of the parking in areas so that the bus can pull into the site and turn around without blocking the street or obstructing other things. So we've agreed to...
I think that would be great for the folks that live downtown, maybe can't get to Osgood Landing to get on the bus, and this gives them a great option. So, thank you.
Some people might not have a car. They can just walk.
You can now be able to walk into this location, we'll add additional residences as well. One of the adjustments we're also going to make, we're just not ready to roll out specifics on it yet, is we're going to move the time back so that the pickup in the Mill area will be 6:30 or 6:35. We'll give you an exact time. So we'll be leaving to Boston about 15 minutes early, which is also some additional feedback we received, so folks can get there before 8 o'clock.
All right, thank you. David, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in today, both of you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an update from Environmental Partners. Environmental Partners was a group that we...
Sorry for the noise.
Oh, it's good. It's a group that we engaged to do a study on the GLSD facility and the anaerobic digestors and the effects on the town and the facility. Do we have a representative tonight?
Yes, Bob is...
Oh, hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob Rafferty from Environmental Partners.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. So, quick summary. We primarily looked at the quality of life issues, the sorts of the things like noise and trucking deliveries and odors particularly. And what we found from the reports that we looked at, that the odors could be an issue at some point if they don't pay attention to the delivery and the disposal of the organic sludge at the treatment facility. So we highlighted that for the consideration of the GLSD and their engineers. We also looked at some other things that we feel are not insurmountable, I think is what we're saying, that as long as they're paying attention to them as they move forward in their design, we don't think there'll be any extraneous or noise or lights or visual impacts whatsoever. Given the fact that the plant will be operating a lot more 24 hours a day because of this, we expect to have some more action going on over the nighttime. So all of those things we highlighted and we want them to be tracked and recognized by the GLSD and their district commissioners to move forward on so they protect the town.
Thanks. Do you remember the charge and the scope? I think certainly Environmental Partners has done a nice job of placing, in some cases, for the benefit of people like myself, plain language in terms of some of the concerns and then a number of steps to make sure that those concerns can be addressed. The positive is, this is, the project is in preliminary design phase and therefore these recommendations, I would recommend that these recommendations get forwarded to the Greater Laurent Sanitary District so they can have these recommendations, that all of the commissioners will have them available. Bob has done an interesting job a little bit beyond the scope, but we appreciate it and that there's some other information relative to sort of the financial feasibility of the project that he thinks are important. I can tell you as the representative of the board on that group, it'll be helpful information as we, my suggestion will be that CDM goes back and reworks the pro forma and the financials, the financial feasibility in a way that gets us information that's more conservative or more appropriate and not information that's just on the broadest view. And I certainly think that if the board's supportive of me forwarding the suggestions, I can report back on whether or not these suggestions are in fact incorporated into the design to make sure that the concerns of the boards are, the board is addressed.
Yeah, I think I would be supportive of that. And I think, you know, the findings are such that they're not, they don't seem to be too overwhelming for the facility and, you know, given the fact that they're given early notice about them, and the recommendations are fairly simple to implement, well, from a layman's perspective, fairly simple to implement, you know, with the offloading of the trucks and everything. So I think there are things that they should include in their, in their plan and would really benefit the community.
I think there are things that might have fallen through the cracks that would have an impact, and we just want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
A lot of it seems to be on the wait time for the trucks is where, if odors were to occur, it would be, that's where the problems could come from.
Yes.
So how do we, how do we, how do we handle that if they are being, you know, backlogged and you've got trucks waiting? I mean, do you think even with, what is the number 15, that we should be able to handle that?
Well, that is a good thing that it's in preliminary design because part of the process here is making an amendment to the host agreement that limits when the trucks can arrive. And if you limit the time that they can arrive, they'll sort of bunch up with the facilities they have right now. So what they can do is just add another receiving station or schedule the trucks to do a better job of delivery management, so to speak. So there will be more trucks there, of course, and the fact it takes an hour versus 10 minutes.
I know, I saw that. That was, and that's when the odors could tend to...
Right, but if they engineer it correctly, they'll have a vacuum pulling on the trucks so they won't escape, the odors won't escape. But if they had an additional receiving facility instead of the one, maybe go to three. That would relieve the backup deceptives trucks anyway.
And when we took the tour, they talked about how, you know, that beast has to be fed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and over the weekend, they may not have the material to feed it, so they're going to have to have some kind of a storage tank anyway. So they might, they must have to have some kind of an offload facility to feed that storage tank as well.
They're planning on two, two storage tanks so that they can feed it into the process over time. So hopefully they can find the room to put enough facilities there to offload the trucks in time.
Right, is that what you're suggesting, like another off?
Well, for the, for the storage tank, if they need to, if they have, you know, over more than one truck at a time so they could offload, I don't know how it's going to work, but they're going to have a storage tank and somebody's going to have a primary feeding tank, so they'll have to somehow stock that storage tank as well because they need that for Saturday, or Sundays, and if there's a Monday holiday, they need to have that material to keep feeding the monster.
That's right, yes.
The other thing too is that you thought that maybe some of their projections were a little too rosy financially that...
Yeah, the only financial analysis that I saw that was done was based on the fact they would get all of the material that they could handle and that it would operate very, very efficiently. And usually, we like to do some sort of sensitivity analysis, say, what if, you know, there was a supply problem or what if the, the end product, the pellets aren't of the quality that they want? None of this has been proven yet, and usually you have a pilot study that's done before you go to full construction. And they have one scheduled, but the timing between that and going to full construction is very, very short and they have a lot of time to make adjustments. So we asked them to kind of go back and look at some of these projections and say, what if it didn't work as well as this and what would it realistically be for us so that the commissioners and everybody involved would have a better understanding of what the parameters are, not just one end of the scale, but, you know, not so good to very good, you'd get a better understanding.
And government, you should really only bank on the conservative, the lower number than the higher one when you're talking about revenues. And then you get a pleasant surprise later on. But the other concern that I had is, and I'm really leaning on you because I, I have no idea, but that the DEP or state regs might change because we would be one of the only facilities around, and is there something hidden that could put North Andover sort of on the map for this type of a facility and maybe being overburdened? Maybe that the state has some sort of a reg that instead of 15 vehicles, it's, you know, 50 vehicles. Is there anything in your research where you've come across anything that we need to be concerned about?
Not really, because from the information we had as far as the expansion of the plant to handle the load, right now it's financially feasible, given the rosy projections, to do this. But to go any further, to take in any more load, they'd have to greatly expand the facility, and that's millions and millions of dollars. This 40% of the state organic load could come to this facility based on DEP's projections, and that would completely take up that digester and the spare space they have in the other three digestors. And the rest of the facility doesn't have the capacity to handle anymore.
Okay, so that would limit it?
There are very, very limited facilities, like five, I think, in Massachusetts that have this type of thing. But keep in mind, the MWA has those giant egg-shaped digestors out there, and they're looking to pilot from anywhere from 40 to 80% of the total load from the state in one to two digestors. So they have enormous capacity if they could figure out how to get it there, to handle it.
I'm a little confused because I thought Maine was the closest one. Is this, Maine is the closest one for the state-of-the-art type version? Is that what the, so there are others in state, but not?
That, yeah, they're not set up to take organic waste or they could take a little, but they don't have a capacity for it. Yes.
So the MWA has begun to explore this. Their method for delivering the material is via barge, and therefore there are some complications associated with that.
Did you say barge?
Barge. And so part of the consideration, which has been very helpful, again, putting on the hat of trustee, and I am going to ask Bob to come to the GLSD meeting and share these thoughts, is that although there were aspects of the initial design and study which were deemed conservative, primarily around some of the reimbursements that they're allowed in rebates, they certainly could have been a little more conservative on the load because today we would be the only off-taker, but there may be others in the future. And so we want to assume that there will be others in that. So I don't think it changes the business economics, quite frankly, but there are important considerations that should be brought to the Board of Trustees and the Board of Directors over there and considered, you know, as part of the evolving process.
It's also a very, a lot of companies are looking at getting into the business of processing organic waste from composters to smaller anaerobic digestors, so there'll be competition out there.
That's a good ad.
Yes.
I know. Depends on your perspective.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Just two changes to the draft you have in front of you before I have Bob release the final format on page four. Near the top, the second line down, the second, the second sentence, it says truck idling should be, actually, I just misread that too, should be prohibited. I misread that, so that's one correction that doesn't need to be made.
I asked Dick that, I whispered that. I said, no idling, right?
Right, and that's what will be identified. That's one of the items that will be in the amended host, the amended, amended host agreement.
Absolutely, no idling.
No idling, yeah, those kind of things. Second, at the bottom of page two, in the category under item two, which is visual, in the first sentence under findings, the location of new digestive facilities, the word "should" should be removed.
Okay.
So it should be the location of new digestive facility, facilities is not likely to cause new visual. It's just grammatical error. So I'll have Bob, as long as that's the direction from the board, Bob, come and I'll provide this to the GLSD in advance. I'll have Bob come to the meeting at the end and talk about those findings and compel upon the other commissioners that not only these things need to be incorporated and ultimately be memorialized in an amendment, but that some of the financial considerations he identified be provided to the design firm of CDM so that those can be reworked to get a more realistic sort of financial view of the proposal.
And I think we'd like to see if there is a response from the GLSD, if there's, you know, if there's pushback or there's something like that, you know, even confirmation, we'd like to see that, just to see what their reactions are and their responses to the findings.
Or put that in next...
Who will you be getting to draft the host community agreement or who will be our representative to review it?
We have to draft host amendment agreement, the amended host agreement or the amendment to the host agreement. We will incorporate what has been identified by Environmental Partners, and then we'll have Town Council make sure it matches sort of legal form to the main agreement. But the technical pieces that I think protect us from an environmental perspective are included in this document, so we'd want to provide that, this plus the existing agreement to council to make sure that those are incorporated.
I think it was really worthwhile. They seem to have done a pretty good job.
Yeah, I think some of them were kind of like common sense things, but you need to really have someone point those out to you sometimes and, you know, with the offloading and the...
That we wouldn't have the expertise to...
We just know we don't want it to smell. We don't know how to keep it from smelling. But what would be causing the smell?
We don't want a lot of noise and we don't want idling, and we want to make sure we're compensated so this project doesn't cost us more money.
Right. Okay, any other communications or announcements?
Sheep shearing on Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, the sheep shearing is on Sunday, May seventeenth, at the Carmen, at the old Carmen, it's fantastic for family time, and it is ten AM to four PM, probably a hundred vendors, and of course, all the animals and...
Always a great time.
No dogs, right?
No dogs are supposed to be on the Carmen, other than the, the show dogs that are there, the, the sheepdogs that do the demonstrations are the only dogs, and the reason, they don't want you to bring dogs because it, it kind of disturbs them, or the other dogs, because those dogs are so well-trained, they don't care about other dogs around, but the other dogs that you bring on the Carmen may get reactive to those other dogs, so they start to bring dogs on the Carmen. The other thing we have coming up, another exciting event on May nineteenth, is our annual town meeting, which will take place at seven o'clock at the north end of a high school auditorium. I hope everybody can get out and support the articles on the, on the warrant this year. There's also a...
Or not.
Or not, well, well, in support, I mean, whether or not you vote for or against, but, you know, just come out and, and make your opinion known. There is also a, if you are really bored, there's a continuous loop going on, on the north end of a cam with Andrew, myself, Andrew McDevitt, and Mark, Mark DeSalvo, discussing town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say, it is evidently not boring, because it has been commented to me by a couple of people, and, and someone just this evening, before I even left my house, was commenting on how informative it actually is.
Oh, well, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah?
Well, that's great, well, thank you for that.
And there's childcare, as always.
There's childcare, right, there's childcare at town meeting.
If you wanna watch that meeting, or? No, no, if you wanna come to town meeting, if you wanna come, if you feel so inspired from Dick's speech on TV, you wanna come and participate at town meeting, correct the kids.
And if you need to get a copy of the warrant, there'll be copies available that evening at the town meeting, you can pick one up there, you can also get them here at town hall if you want to read one in advance, or it's available on the north end of our town website as well. So you can certainly prepare yourself for the meeting in advance or that night.
Could I add a mock the calendar date of June sixteenth, from six to eight PM, is the public open house of the new school central administration building.
Wow, that's exciting.
That's interesting.
Phase three will be complete.
Very good, that's very cool.
The new superintendent will be moving directly into that building, I believe, right?
Yes.
Right? Maybe?
Directly?
Yes.
But we'll be stopping, we'll be stopping.
I mean, we'll, no stopping at Osgood, just right into the new building.
She may stop at Osgood temporarily and wave at the building, but her first office will be the new building.
That's fantastic, that's great.
Any other announcements or communications?
It's June, June sixteenth, it's at, at six to eight PM.
So on Wednesday, May twentieth, North Andover's having our Special Olympics, that's happening at eight thirty AM at the track at the high school, that's coming up, so if anybody's so inclined to go and support our young residents, get up there, May twentieth, Wednesday, May twentieth, at eight thirty AM.
And Sunday, this coming Sunday, also the seventeenth, but early in the morning, is the Alex Ferriese Annual Track Meet. I think it's called something more than that, but it is in memoriam for Alex Ferriese.
That's excellent.
May fourteenth.
Wow, we're never ending tonight.
Public meeting to get feedback on the town hall facade and front courtyard design.
Yeah, I think that's important, if people come down and let their opinions be known on what they want to see for your town hall, so that would be great. I see Mr. Limbert in the audience, so I'm gonna wait for public comment to talk about or hear about the schedule for the high school graduation and everything that's coming up also, so I'll put you on the spot for that when you come up for public comment. Any other announcements or communications? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent items. The first is an affordable housing unit, Two Harvest Drive. I believe this will be to waive our right of first refusal for purchase?
Yes. Move that the Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the affordable housing unit at Two Harvest Drive, Unit one oh eight, one oh five, I'm, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request to dispose of some surplus equipment from the DPW.
Mr. Chairman, Bruce Thibodeau, Director of DPW, has requested that two vehicles, we identify as vehicle number twenty-one, which is two thousand two Chevy Silverado, and vehicle sixty-four, two thousand two John Deere tractor, be declared surplus.
Okay, we have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of DPW Director Bruce Thibodeau to surplus the two thousand two Chevy Silverado F-350 and two thousand two John Deere tractor with attachments per his memo by the town manager dated April twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have a request from Patriotic Observance and Marching Committee to hold the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, which, we didn't say that during communications announcements, but please also let that be known, on Monday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, at ten AM, we'll have the memorial parade, which normally starts at the, trying to think, that one starts at the Carmen and marches up to the cemetery. So do we have a motion on this one?
Second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. We have an appointment tonight for the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee, Richard Gramley, and anyone, anyone from the subcommittee wanna say anything?
Very thoughtful gentleman, who came in and wants to serve on a committee that we're just starting to organize, actually, so he's ready to, ready to take on the task of, of setting the bylaws and making sure that this committee, in its first jump in the public eye, is able to fulfill the mission, so...
He's really motivated and excited to, to get involved.
Would one of you like to make the motion?
Motion to appoint, I just could call him Dr. Gramley, I have to double check the first name on my computer.
Sure.
Richard.
The paper comes in handy.
I was told it was cost-effective to have this.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so, motion to appoint Dr. Richard Gramley to the elderly tax, the, my white screen, the elderly, the elderly, well, is it just disabled?
Yeah, Elderly slash Disabled Taxation Fund is what I have on there.
Okay.
On your paper.
On your paper, yes, indeed. Motion, yes, to appoint.
One second.
Yeah, one second.
I'd like to say, though, for people who don't know too much about this, this committee is where you can donate in your tax bill to help the elderly and the disabled, and this committee is going to be setting up the parameters of, of how the money will be dispersed, who would be eligible, and so with that, as we get some, some help for, financial help for some of these people, we're hoping that people will see the good works at these small donations that you would, or large, if you choose, will do to benefit people who could really use them, so...
So are we, are you looking for additional members for that committee, or is that committee fully staffed at this point?
Yeah, we're close.
You're close, yeah?
I think we may be fine at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Great.
Okay, so we have, I'm sorry, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and as usual, thank you for those who step up to serve on these committees. Dr. Gramley, thank you. Okay, next, a vote, maximum useful life of equipment bond authorization.
Mr. Chairman, when we choose to bond certain equipment for periods of time that are within a range from the minimum, in this case, a six-wheel dump truck, which could have a range from five to ten years, we need board authorization under MGL Chapter Forty-four, Section seven-nine, to get board approval in this case. So bond council has recommended that we get board approval to bond this hundred and sixty thousand dollar six-wheel dump truck for a period of ten years, and we will own it for ten years.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below, to be financed with the proceeds of the borrowing authorized by a vote of town passed May twentieth, twenty fourteen, Article twenty-three, is hereby determined pursuant GLC forty-four seven-nine, paragraph seven-nine, to be as follows, am I doing that right?
Seven.
Section seven, par, I knew I was missing something up there.
Sorry.
Line nine, a hundred and sixty thousand six-wheel dump truck, ten years.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second to the big discussion. So how much will this dump truck cost with our borrowing costs?
Boy, I don't know. I don't have that answer.
You know, is it gonna be two hundred thousand?
It'd be close to two hundred thousand, sure, if you're borrowing for ten years, I know. So we have a standard for all our capital products, projects, including rolling stock, that anything below twenty-five thousand dollars is funded through the operating budget. We have made a decision with the support of this board that we've raised that limit to fifty thousand, while towns are good, so we don't borrow as much, but in cases of equipment in this kind of value, a hundred and sixty thousand, we would borrow it. Our traditional rate of interest is about three percent, but over ten years, I wish I could do the math in my head, I can't, but it will be, it'd be in excess of two hundred thousand, around that number.
It could be that high?
I, I would hate to be wrong, and I would rather be on the higher side of that, but pretty close.
I think that it's just the ten years that kind of threw me a little bit, I guess, but I know we've done this in the past, but because we're in pretty good shape, I just thought.
Well, we generally, although it's allowed for ten years, when we build the financing schedule, we don't always go to those limits, so on average, even though we're, even though there are useful life for, a useful life for each type of capital project, so buildings are twenty years, roadways are twenty years, rolling stock can range five or ten, if this were a traditional pickup truck, at, at forty-five, fifty thousand, we wouldn't go to ten, we never bond to the limit allowed. So our average life of bonding actually sits below nine years, even though we have projects at twenty years and projects at five years and projects at ten. So when we actually hit the market, we are aggressive about making sure that we bond, on average, two to three years less than what's allowed. But where this type of truck can be bonded for a long time, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck, it's not your traditional five or seven-year truck, having the authority allows our, a financial advisor to build the bonds to be most feasible for us in terms of getting the best rate.
How long do we expect this truck to last?
Truck of this, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck, you saw, we were, we had a pickup we just surplus today was an oh-two pickup truck, that's a thirteen-year-old pickup truck. So we would certainly, we, we would not ever surplus a vehicle prior to the paying of the bonds. We wouldn't be allowed to, actually.
I, I think we just surplus the seventy-two front-end loader, right?
Nineteen seventy-two?
Nineteen seventy-two.
So that says something about our maintenance department.
They, they last a considerable amount of time. This is not the traditional vehicle, what people may think of in terms of thinking of a dump truck.
It's really the ten years that kind of threw me a little bit.
So is it replacing an existing vehicle?
Almost all of our stock, we, we're not in a net add environment with any of our stock, police vehicles, fire vehicles, public works, we are, we drew a line in the sand three or four years ago and said, any truck that comes on must, must mean an offsetting surplus. You may not have seen what this replaces in that surplus, because we often do it as a trade-in to the purchase of a vehicle, that's the best way to align it, but we're not doing any net adds to our inventory.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, so you, motion was Ms. Watson, second was Ms. Sunili, Sunili, I'm sorry, my cold, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good. The next, we have a, two requests from Columbia Gas to do some excavations for, to install new gas service, one on Summer Street and one on Hoot F. Do we have any, I don't see anybody from, from the gas company here?
You may recall the Board, Mr. Chairman, as we were, as you were getting littered with these requests, provided me the authority to sign new service requests when they were truly small domestic requests. In both these cases, the, the length of the service install is beyond that, it's, you know, it's longer than three to five feet, so thought it appropriate to bring to the Board. These are routine, and it wouldn't require Columbia Gas to be present, but where they were outside the parameters for which you provided me authority, we brought them to the Board.
Okay, let's see, it doesn't really give the length here, in here.
On the graphic, a couple of pages down, a three, a three-foot by thirty-foot cut. Again, this is a service install, so it's, the only reason it's longer is it happens to be the connection to the home is further. Both are three feet by thirty feet.
Going into house, right?
Yep, the domestic service install.
Switch, okay.
Yep.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Columbia Gas of Massachusetts to excavate, excavate seventy-five Summer Street for the purpose of installing new gas line, they have police and stuff there, right?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll need a second motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Columbia Gas of Massachusetts to excavate seventy-nine Hewitt Avenue for the purpose of installing new gas service.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all those in, any discussion, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Gas is clean, they might be getting rid of oil, right?
Just maybe a friendly reminder on the Laurie Burzleff Green Agenda cover memorandum sheets, the requirements of the various departments are on those cover sheets.
I like Laurie Burzleff's new green cover sheets. I, in all honesty, my packets, my paper packets are so easy to follow.
My paper packets, oh.
That was a green, too.
Yeah, I was a green, too.
I appreciate it.
That's right, I was a green, too.
When it's not just...
I, I walked right into that, didn't I? I did.
Yep.
We're going with opaque, next, translucent sheets, won't see anything. Okay, so we will... I was gonna say, everything's translucent.
I'm old school.
We'll move into licensing, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now with licensing.
First thing on our agenda this evening is St. Gregory's Armenian Men's Club for their one-day all liquor license for cigar night on June eighteenth, from six to eleven thirty. We have done this in the past, do you wanna come on up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, this is the second time I've been here, I was here last week.
Yes, oh, that's right, yeah.
And you were kind enough to take a picture.
I know, thank you.
Right, I'm the chairman of the men's club, and we're gonna be hosting our event on June eighteenth, Thursday night, and we are asking for a full alcohol license, it's a fundraiser for the church, and that's about it in a nutshell, and you're more than welcome to attend, if you'd like to attend.
Thank you. Everything is in order, it'll be catered by Joe Fish, and we are looking to also waive fees.
So moved.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. You are all set.
Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Good luck with your, the fundraiser. You did good last year, I think, I remember, it was pretty packed when I was driving by, I didn't go, I'm just, I didn't go.
I didn't see that post, I'm beautiful.
No, no, no. Oh, it's for the paper.
So they've got liquor, cigars, and fish.
Yeah, liquor, cigars, and fish, woo!
Sounds pretty good.
Yeah. Next on this evening is Dolly Miller of Psychic Readings on Turnpike Street, Dolly, come on right now.
I have a quick question on this.
Yeah, ask away.
We, we're renewing?
Yes.
Why wasn't this done in December?
They're not renewed, the renewal on a calendar year basis was based upon the original license date.
Oh, that's something we have to do, yeah.
Yeah, so she doesn't... You've been there for a while now, though.
Yes, they couldn't find the license for me in the beginning, so this past, this is my third year coming back here, so I've just been coming every May.
Seeing you a second, what are we gonna say, put on a license?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, no, no.
I could predict you're gonna say that.
That's true, yes.
Do I have a second for Don?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How would I say?
You two. We have Merrimack College this evening, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six five, six different events.
Ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, 10. We had talked about this.
No, we did not.
It's a very busy time of year as we're heading towards the end of school and all of that. Everything is, everything is in order.
I know we better, we better approve number two.
Is that one you're going to? Oh, employee, of course.
And we better approve, number four is kind of funny to have a kid zone with a wine and malt liquor license for the kids.
Yeah, that's pretty funny. That's a reunion one, though.
Yeah.
June 5th, May 10th. How do we want to move these? Do we want to move them? And I, and I will again say that I'm very happy Merrimack College is so proactive all the time. It's great.
Move number one through 10 from Merrimack College, requests for various wine and beer and liquor licenses for what presumes to be their graduation celebrations.
And beyond.
And beyond, yeah.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second then.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have fun. Do I have a motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are out of licensing.
Okay, I don't see any public hearings, old business, new business, public comment.
Time for Stan.
Quite on the agenda.
We want to hear about the graduation and what's coming up in the.
Yeah.
Stanleyford, 43 Stone Creek Road, also a member of the school committee in North
Andover. Well, as you know, our graduation, early June, June 5th, 6:00 PM, high school field, weather permitting. But, you know, our principal is pretty insistent about having good weather, so we always expect to be on the field. And it's been a, it's been a great time every year, except for the last year. We've had good times on the field. The preceding evening, at 6:30, we have our scholarship awards night, also at the high school. So, please come and see all the wonderful scholars and scholar athletes we have in our graduating class. It's just a great time. The other thing I wanted to say is, with permission of those who are providing the wonderful facility for us, we would like to have at least one school committee meeting in our new facility this June. We have a school committee meeting scheduled for June 18th and with the permission of the appropriate authorities here in town, would like to try to do that. So, that's our hope. We'll see how that works out. Wait, I was, I was, I asked that question and they said, "Well, we would have had the open house, so we wouldn't have messed up the building before that, so we should be okay." So, they might let us do it. So, that's our, that's our hope and expectation. And so, we hope to be able to do that, have our first meeting there and then, as Ms. Watson pointed out, have our new superintendent move right in, be all set to go. We're really looking forward to the facility. It's a wonderful building and I've heard some very, very good comments about both the speed with which the building has been completed and the architecture. Some very nice comments about the unobtrusive architecture of the building. I think that's a, was a really nice touch to not have some kind of sore thumb on that corner. So, I think that was a, our architect for that did a very nice job. So, we're very appreciative of that and really looking forward to that. Not that we don't love coming here to have our meetings here, but we're gonna miss you guys. You know, you can come and have a meeting at our place if you want, sometimes.
It's a very nice facility to have meetings there.
Yeah, it really is. And it'll give, it'll give the town more flexibility, too, to have, you know, we don't use that, we won't be using that for meeting all the time. So, other groups can have televised meetings there if they want. So, that'll be another facility available to people to use for that purpose, as well as just general meetings for other groups.
Plus, you have the public meeting room, excuse me.
Yeah.
That's available as well.
It'll be nice. So, we hope to have everything set and if we could have that meeting there to sort of do a dry run on, you know, the cable access and all of that on the 18th. So, we're hopeful and we'll see how it works out. So, and please come and, come to the open house on the 16th and take a look at this wonderful facility. Just great job, so thank you.
So, did I ask how paving is in Out Country?
How paving what?
Paving is in Out Country. In Out Country. How is the paving on?
Paving is good. We're getting there. Now, now I have to do is I gotta get up my paintbrush and start painting the fog lines there so I can stay on the road, but the paving is doing better. Yeah, I appreciate that and I, I know that we've had our crews out there working. As a matter of fact, I knew that was going on because they parked all the equipment on the end of my street. So, you know, I figured, I figured between you and Mr. Thibodeau.
They follow directions well.
Yeah, yeah. You might have said, yeah, yeah, you might, you might have said, "I know exactly where you can park that paver. I got a great place for it."
They asked where they could put the equipment and I said, "Someone's been..."
Yeah, I said, I said, "Either somebody's got a really big driveway or we're gonna get a little work done on Boxford Street." So, that was, yeah, that was great. We certainly appreciate that. Now, with some lines, hey, we'll be all set out there. You know, the phone will stop ringing and the email will, these emails will slow down, but we appreciate all the good work.
Baby steps. Look at the lines.
Yeah, well, no, and I wanted to, I do have to say that the $123,000 for our pothole fund has been well-used in our part of the woods out there. We've had a lot of good work done by the crews coming out and fixing the potholes. So, we, I've been very, very impressed by how active they've been about keeping them. And, you know, some of those aren't, it's not a one pothole fix. I mean, you gotta do it a couple of times, but they've been very good about it. So, we feel, we feel well-served. Out Country, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Seeing nobody else, I assume we'll have another public comment. So, we'll move on to the town managers' report.
I will continue the conversation by saying, there was a stretch, so Boxford Street from where we had left off to the, to the Boxford Town Line was due to be repaved. There was a section, DPW had the crews out there and they did repave that, our contractor repaved it. There was a stretch left unrepaved because there's a planned subdivision in that area. We wanted to make sure that we didn't repave it and then break into the ground again. So, there was a section of that stretch that was left unpaved and will be paved as soon as that subdivision can connect into our water system. So, for those folks who wonder why there's a gap, that's the reason why there's a gap. I also provided this up in some information about Brook Street. Folks who regularly travel 114 may wonder why we have these do not enter signs on the 114 side of Brook Street. Sometimes they're adhered to and sometimes they're ignored, but they've been up for quite a while. That is actually not a public roadway, but in fact, private property and owned by one of the abutting farm owners. The town has regularly traveled it and been allowed to travel it. But due to the, the way the roadway is constructed, it very much is a bowl not far from the 114 side and some difficulty with the water in that area. That road gets washed out frequently. So, we often place a do not enter signage at the end of Brook Street to make sure that residents don't find themselves.
Stranded.
Stranded. As you can see from some of the comments from the DPW director, to remedy what is really not our roadway would be substantial and so it's not a priority of ours at this point. And we'll continue at various times to block the end of that road when we feel like there's a possibility of risk. Right now it's dry and, and people, although the signs are there, I do notice people regularly.